I'll call to order the February thirteenth, 2020, commission meeting. Please rise for the pledge of allegiance.
Pledge of allegiance to the United States of America and to the republic from which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, liberty and justice for all.
I didn't need to have Chief Biagi lead us, we could all hear. Lisa, can we have roll call, please?
Commissioner Kriebel?
Here.
Commissioner Liangria?
Here.
Mayor Holtzman. Let the record reflect, Mayor Holtzman is absent.
Oh.
Are we calling her?
For...
She's been calling, or we're gonna call her.
For what?
For me.
The whole thing? Okay, I wasn't aware.
I think she's calling, I think.
Alright, I'm gonna call her.
You want me to text her?
Sorry. Yeah, text her and see.
Is that what you said?
Is that your understanding, Tim, or no?
Did she say that when we were talking to her?
No.
She's not calling?
I didn't hear her say that, but I could be wrong.
Text her and we will if she wants us to.
Okay.
So, alright. Open Public Meetings Act announcement pursuant to the Open Public Meetings Act. Adequate notice of this meeting has been provided in accordance with the law. We have a presentation this evening. How we work our meetings is we do a, um, welcome Dave, thanks for coming. We do a workshop first, and that's what we're gonna have first here tonight. And we're gonna have a discussion on North Beach parking.
Yeah.
Commissioner Kriebel?
Great, thank you.
No.
I don't think so.
It was earlier.
I'm guessing there's some people from North Beach here. We ask for people to come out. Raise your hands. Excellent, thank you for, uh...
You from North Beach?
Okay. Um, so, um, I asked you to, I asked to have a little bit of a workshop, and this may seem different from what you've seen in the past, because we're actually asking for your input. I'm gonna go through a little bit about the way the situation of parking is right now, and that things we're struggling with. There's a lot of moving parts in, um, in this process.
Is there a little bit of that?
Yes, far into the hall.
Far into the building.
So where do you think about the downstairs?
That's the bottom of the far end of the hall, so.
A little bumping there.
Up and down. So, um, so this commission meeting on the North Beach, specifically about the park. Talking about the parking permits for unlimited, right now we have unlimited two-hour parking in the first ward, which is from Jackson Avenue to Frankfurt Avenue, and from basically the bay to the beach, right? And right now the city charges one dollar per year. We changed that because we're planning on potentially have, uh, making some changes next year, so we wanted to have the ability to change that, um, that fee structure next year if, after we go through, excuse me, after we go through a year with some of the new changes that are happening, um, we decide, and that's what this meeting's about. I'll wait, looks like there's some more folks coming in. So, so at this point in time, the city issues permits based on...
Open the door.
Chris, we had to leave that open.
There's some more people coming in. Thanks, David. So, right now, at this time, the city issues permits based on four criteria. Uh, one, so residents within the area described with a vehicle. One permit per vehicle, limited only by the number of vehicles they have. So it could be one, it could be ten, and I believe there's some that have multiples, four or five. So that's one criteria. Unlimited amount per home, based on the, based on the registered vehicles in their homes. Second is any rental resident in the area who can show proof of that rental, including some rental, potentially an Airbnb. Those people, I ask for them to a great extent, but they're just as, just as, their rights are just as, uh, the same as anybody that rents and, or anybody that particularly owns. So they would be entitled to, uh, a, a parking pass. Every residential unit can, that we just described in those first two criteria, can get two guest passes. So you can see how it's starting to add up. Every employee of every business can receive a permit. So that adds up to about four thousand permits in an area that has approximately six hundred parking places. So we're playing a very complicated game of musical chairs. Four thousand people can sit for six hundred chairs while ten thousand people come to town. So there's some conflict, we believe, and that's what we're here to sort of discuss, right? The new factors in 2020, um, because there's a lot of new construction, these new homes are being lifted. Um, part of them being lifted is that the parking is underneath those homes, and the curb cut, the area that is meant for curb where people can park, has been reduced in some cases. So that limits it. New bike lanes on Atlantic Avenue. You see those nice, um, uh, new bike lanes, and there's new painting. Part of that is this triangular area, which is, this happens to be Vettner Avenue, but part of that, um, was that we legally responsible to put that twenty-foot parking space back, twenty-foot, not, no parking space back. And over the years, that had been shrunk, and there were more parking spaces. So there's fewer parking spaces on Atlantic. And there's also some criticism about the, the landings in the new, uh, on the new North Beach streetscape. Those are in the twenty-foot area. You really, you're not, you're not supposed to be parking there because it's a, it's a viewing hazard for people turning the corner, for people on bikes, that sort of thing.
Site triangles.
Site triangle. Thank you. Third is the theater. We'll bring a return of theater patrons. This isn't something new, exactly. It's new for us, because we're excited we're gonna have a theater. But the theater, when it was originally built, had nine hundred and sixty-eight seats. We also had loos. My wife was a waitress there. She estimates there were probably two hundred seats. Not in her station, but approximately. We don't have, when they changed to a twin, they went to five hundred and eighty-five seats. The new theater is gonna have three hundred and twenty seats. It's gonna have a hundred and ninety restaurant seats. So five hundred and ten total. That's less than when I was a kid and we went to the twin theater. There were lines and there was parking, but, um, and it's gonna be, it's gonna be an adjustment, but it, we survived. So the criticisms of parking permits, and this I think is what I think a lot of people are here to talk about and learn, and also to learn, and hopefully to share what your feelings are. One criticism is common is we should be able to park in front of our own homes, you know? It's my street, that's my, that's my block, I should have, I should be, at least be able to park in front of my street. And because of the density in this area, parking permits are designed to help you do that, right? We just wanna make sure we're doing it correctly. Another parking complaint is that parking permits aren't really fixing anything. It's about collecting fees. And that's, um, although I can understand, empathize with people that have to pay the fees, um, that's really not true in this case. We collect probably six thousand dollars in total right now. Um, and we're really, we, although we are looking for new revenues in order to lower your taxes, I don't believe, and I think the rest of the commission doesn't believe, that parking fees are a profit center. Other cities use them as a profit center, but I don't think that our city is made up that way. That's my personal view. Homeowners already pay property taxes, so some feel it's not fair to make them pay again on their street. Right? These are things that people can complain about, are going to complain about. Some families have more than one car. So if a permit is, gets, everybody gets a permit, it's inherently unfair. Alright? So let's talk about the first complaint. Homeowners do have property rights, and that, but they don't extend to the public street, right? Local municipalities, they, they're, it's our responsibility to, um, to design the street access for common uses for the entire public, like high-rise emergency, fire hydrant access, bus stop locations, things of that nature. The property owner doesn't determine the best use of that street. So that's really not a, it's really not an argument point. Um, if there's no fee, or if it's, uh, too low, individual households benefit from obtaining as many permits as possible, regardless of how many they, they need. And that's the condition we have now. When we have, you know, four thousand permits and six hundred spaces, um, if one household uses more curb space than another, is it fair that they're paying the same amount of money for it? Or maybe they should pay more for using more curb space? You know, it's about fairness, too, right? Property taxes. Yes, homeowners and condo owners directly pay property taxes, renters indirectly pay property taxes through rent, it's all true. Those taxes are used for police protection, for fire protection, for everybody in the city. Beach maintenance, debt service on major projects. The difference is a fee for parking is giving you something individual. It's giving you something special that the folks that don't live in the North Beach area do not have. So it's not, it's, it's a false equivalence to, to say taxes, I pay taxes, I shouldn't have to pay for parking, right? Again, if one household uses more curb space, but theoretically it should cost more. More curb space in one household means less curb space for another person or another household. A lot of cities do this. And if it's too low, individual households benefit, I'm repeating myself, from getting as many as they need. And it also could create unused parking permits. So the benefit is not necessarily there, alright? So we got, we have options, and these are the options we're gonna discuss. We're not gonna take, I don't think we're gonna take an action this year, but potentially we wanna be able to get this right, um, for, and we're gonna look at what the theater effect has on us. But, um, one of the options would be to, um, eliminate or reduce permits for high-rises. Now, for, now, those people are, have rights as well, they, they're, they're residents. A single-family home has a driveway, and, and for the most part, not entirely, but for the most part, those high-rises all have parking. But, the density is different. A square block, the square footage that a high-rise is used versus the square footage that a home uses, it's, it's a, it's a one hundred and fifty-bedroom house with a bunch, it's not a four-bedroom house with two parking places. So there's, there's some differences there. So this is what other cities do. They limit parking, that's one option, to four per residence, they increase the cost, the first one being ten dollars, the second one potentially twenty-five, and a scale up to seventy-five for the third. Now, there's problems with this, too. This might not be fair to the folks that live on Marion Avenue, that have no parking whatsoever, that are in that area, Marion and Beach area. So, none of these are, are foolproof. Another, uh, another is, um, if we keep the three hour, the two-hour parking, I think it should probably go to a three hour, because every movie patron would be in violation of it almost every time they go to see a movie, right? Movies are now longer than two hours. And if they wanna have a nice meal there as well. The fourth might sound harsh at first, but eliminating two parking, two-hour parking altogether, it would eliminate the need for the permits. Might be considered the Wild West option, but, or the Wild North.
Wild North.
But, um, but it would, it could potentially be an option. It eliminates the need, it eliminates the, it eliminates the controversies, well. And it, there is no other part of the city that has two-hour parking. Zero other parts of the city have two-hour parking. And there are other, other businesses that are moving into the city. Now, this is something that, um, I don't think is right for the city, but the CL and Cape May charge, um, three hundred before, they, they have a specific amount, when they're sold out, you're done. Three hundred permits, four hundred permits in some cities. They charge anywhere from two hundred and fifty dollars to three hundred dollars up per, per permit, making sometimes north of a hundred thousand dollars for the city. That's a golden ticket. You can park at any, uh, parking meter, any, uh, anywhere but a handicap spot. I don't think that's correct for the locale, for just a local area that we have, but I think that's a little bit extreme. Part of this is enforcement. I think we need to continue and improve our enforcement. I talked about the twenty feet to curb. I think you'll see more enforcement on that this summer. I think you'll see more, uh, enforcement of people parking in driveways. But on the flip side, if you notice and you keep, and you look around, North Beach area, a lot of people cover, a lot of people have abandoned their driveways, but they still kinda keep their parking spot there, and, um, we're gonna work with, we're gonna work with, uh, the police department and code enforcement, so that those areas could be opened up for more park, for, for, that opens up more, more spaces, right? Parking enforcement at weekends on meters, that's, that's a re, that's, that's always happened. Remove meters from the parking block, from the beach block in this area. So there's, there's a few streets that are kinda leftovers from previous administrations that had meters there, and it's a, it's an anomaly. In North Beach, um, is the only area that has, uh, beach block parking meters. We all kinda feel that...
We remove most of them.
We remove most of them at this point. So that, that's already been done, right?
Great, thank you. Couple still left, not many, here and there.
So again, how much are we, how much are we talking about fees should be? Uh, the, the goal is, of the residential parking permit is to ensure the available parking for permit holders. Ideally, permits would cost an amount where the number of permits purchased does not exceed the number of spaces. So that's six hundred spaces. That's a little hard to achieve in the system that we have right now. That's our biggest failure. We have four permits for every space, at least. Fees vary widely from a dollar to three hundred and sixty dollars. And, um, and I think the, this, this, this format right here, in some form or another, where you're limiting the amount of people that are, that are getting, not only getting a permit for themselves, but they're getting, uh, guest passes, and then they're also, uh, I, I think there's a, there's a, there's a benefit to putting a value on this. I think it might have people using their, saving their parking space, and parking, which is a, uh, there's a, there's a special kind of karma that's gonna catch those people, that, um, that don't park in their parking space, and they park in two spots on the street, and they move it around so that if, so now they, they take out three, basically they take out the three spots. But if you give some, you add a value to this, um, maybe we can change that behavior.
Commissioner, the history's involved, so I should invite the seat to start it.
Why don't you, you've been here much longer than I have, Chief.
Does anybody, does anybody been here more than since the mid-seventies? If you remember correctly, when we started casinos, that was the start of permits.
Right.
Was when everybody was using the area around Jackson Avenue to park their cars, take a jitney off the scene. This is now thirty, forty-some years old. And with the, I don't wanna say changing casinos, but the amount of casinos towards this end has limited the amount of cars that now utilize North Beach to utilize the jitties to go up town. So, with that, we're now at a point where it's actually a, hasn't seen its time anymore. That's where we're at now. We, we don't have that influx all year round. If you remember, residents in San Diego, it was through the winter, through the summer, it was always a struggle getting parking because of casinos. It is not that way anymore in the winter. I've been demonstrating there's plenty of parking. We're talking about three months, really in a hundred days of summer.
Right.
Sometimes even less that we're dealing with. This is really about mid-June for Labor Day. And then Labor Day, you go down to the Academy on Vettner Avenue, and you can see the tumbleweeds. So this is really what we're talking about when we get down to this, maybe two or three months. So, with that, we're trying to change something that's been around for thirty years and we've all kind of been used to.
Forty.
And never did anything about.
Right, and that, and so we're trying to change that inertia, and we realize that there's gonna be, there's going to be an effect with the theater opening, um, it's, it's gonna be a little bit more of a Vettner thing than it is, than it was, um, my family came to, to work in casinos, when you saw, um, you saw jitties, you saw people in uniforms lined up to go to the casinos, and you know, and those, those cars were taking up the parking. Atlantic City hasn't changed. On, north of Vettner, or, north of Vettner, of, of Jackson Avenue, that parking permit is still in effect. But, um, but as you said, there's fewer casinos, um, this is more of a Vettner issue, um, and... Thank you. That's my presentation in terms of what...
Tim, before we open it up to the, I'd like to see if I can get Dave Shropshire to speak a little bit.
Before we have, uh, before we open up to the public, we have a guest, uh, who does this for a living. I'm Dave.
So I asked Dave Shropshire, who's a traffic engineer that works all over the state, uh, lives in Ocean City.
I do.
So he's familiar with parking issues in a barrier island community. Um, I've worked with Dave on numerous projects, and he was kind enough to come tonight and give us some insight.
Well, actually, well, Chief, excuse me, I have to answer. Will you just have him come up to your mic?
Yeah, why don't you come up?
Yeah, come on up.
Just going around, Dave, thanks.
We can pick it up up in the corner.
Good.
So you're being...
Just stand near that one, you should be fine.
And, [laughing] thanks for coming, Dave.
Chief, uh, that's okay. Well, I...
I was very glad that the chief mentioned what he mentioned, because typically the history is completely lost in terms of what happens, and happens in beach communities in particular. With regard to having two-hour limits and permits and kind of the intermingling, uh, it makes things difficult to understand, and then when you have that many, uh, permits that are out there, it makes it a system that's hard to enforce. So there's a lot of things that are working against each other, uh, for a condition that really has to be monitored over a three-month period, as opposed to all year round. So, uh, this is not unusual, and you can see that different communities, as you did in your presentation, have looked at different ways, uh, to, uh, address this, and certainly the theater impact is something that needs to be considered in this whole thing, because that will change the dynamic a little bit.
Right, right. Thank you.
So what I think, what, what we hope to be able to do is take some input tonight, take that in, sit down and talk to Dave and, and get, get some, you know, proposal from Mr. Shropshire and his, and his firm to help us come to a solution, if that's the way we're gonna go.
Yeah, even if it's a meeting and workshop, just to sort of have a...
But as presumptions, don't you think, to start, we have to wait to see what it does?
Yeah, exactly. And, and why I wanted Dave to be here now is to kinda maybe help us monitor that...
Absolutely.
Through this summer, when the theater opens, hopefully in May. That's what they're telling us, knock on wood. April, May, they're hoping to open, so we'll, we'll get together and talk about that, but I, I wanted him to see and, and hear what happens tonight, and then kinda start it off, so.
I think it'd be very productive if you can, um, maybe even if it's just a work session after the fact, after we've kinda collected some data from our parking people, collected some data from just our, from our residents after the summer, we can see that.
Right, and we, we obviously have had eyes on similar situations in similar beach communities over the years, so we kinda know what to look for and, and some of the things that we can add, so that'll be great. If I ask you, if I ask someone, there is no ultimate answer. It's gonna hurt some people no matter what, and it's gonna help some people no matter what. Correct. I mean, you're, you're absolutely right, there's not an all-encompassing, it covers everybody, answer. And that has to do with exactly what you've been talking about, which is, there's a limited resource here.
Right.
So given the limited resource, there's only so much you can do with that.
Yeah, and, thank you.
Thanks, Dave.
Yeah, so...
Could you stay up there for a minute?
Well, so, so the questions should be directed through the, the DAS, and...
Yeah, but if you, if you could come up to your, come to the microphone.
I'd speak loud enough.
Well, you have to come up to the microphone.
No.
It's a, and state your name and your address. I apologize to the rules, but...
Dave, if you wanna have a seat, if you wanna sit, whatever you wanna do.
Mitchell Corson, Five Thousand Boardwalk. Anything else?
That's good, thank you.
Thank you.
You being the expert, what suggestions can you put forth so we can evaluate? Because we being laymen, what suggestions would you have to solve our particular problem? I'd like to hear that now, if you can.
Well, actually, I think the committee has already put forward some of the options that need to be explored. So, uh, in terms of what you would do additional to that, you know, there's certain equipment that you can put into place, there's different ways that you can handle permitting, uh, so there's, there's different things to look at in that. And there's also the completely eliminate everything option in terms of just letting you go to the Wild West.
Right.
But, uh, that, that may be something very, very dramatic.
Well, the thing that concerns, uh, people, the residents at Five Thousand, is that, uh, it appear, being on a beach block, it appears that people will be coming to the beach if they take away a two-hour limit, for example, people who, who are not even residents of Vettner, using the beach, and you, leaving their car there all day without any consequence.
Right.
Eliminating parking places.
That, that happens on every other beach block in the city.
Happens on my street.
Yes, okay, fine.
Yeah, right.
But I'm talking about my issue, okay, so...
Of course, yeah.
So...
[laughing]
So what is the solution for that?
So we're not...
In fact, we don't, I don't think we're here to present a solution today. We're here to identify that we're gonna be looking at this, we're telling, we're trying to be as open and transparent with the public as possible about the solutions that we might, on your behalf, because that's what we were elected to do, to make the decisions. The fact that there are people park, um, and leave their cars there, um, it's, um, there's also, uh, there's, there's, there's a bit of, of reality with living in a short community. And, um, we, every, there is no other two-hour parking limit anywhere else in the city, except for your area. So is that how, there, there's a fairness factor there, too.
Well, I think they should put two-hour parking limit all over the city. That's my opinion.
What do you think about that?
Be very unusual, I mean...
And have, of course, have, have the permits for the residents. And I thought that the residents only were permitted one or two stickers and one or two placards for visitors.
That's incorrect. You can have as many permits as a resident, you can have as many permits as you have cars. And that's the diff, that's part of this, this disconnect here, is that we have some people that have four, I mean, Mr. Agostino, can you speak to that?
Whoever's on the certificate of occupancy and the car ready to then, or entitled to a permit, sticker, free card.
And in some cases, there's more than two or three, right? I mean, you see, for sure, I mean...
Well, that's one solution, that there will only be allowed two...
Right.
Per, per household.
Right.
That's one of the things we've talked about, yep.
And what I think you just said is, limiting that, limiting that to two, maybe two per household could be a way of making it a little bit more...
And would it be prohibitive in cost to put meters all over the city?
Ooh.
[laughing] Chief, you all right?
Wouldn't it be prohibitive cost-wise? Well, they, they pay for themselves, but I don't think it's a, I don't think it's a, the, the idea behind, um, behind meters, um, is that people, again, they abuse, they sit and they park their car, potentially in a business district where we're looking for people to, that we're looking for, uh, for that business. It's not fair for them to have a, a person park their car and leave it, go to the beach for three hours when they need, they need turnover for their patrons to drop off laundry or whatever it is. So, and it would be very unusual to completely blanket the city with meters.
No, I don't, I don't follow what you said. If they have a meter, it's, and two-hour limit.
It's really meant to limit turnover in our business districts.
Right.
Yeah, but we're not, we're not entirely a business district. Here's the zoning map. So the, so this is our business district, these are all residential homes, um, you, you really, that, I wouldn't wanna put a meter in my, outside of my house. I, I have, I live on a residential street right down here, and, and it's, and I can park wherever I want right now. But, three weekends out of the summer, I sometimes have to park three blocks away from my house, and it's frustrating. But I would be more frustrated if I had to put a meter in front of me.
Well, you would, we wouldn't have to put them, you wouldn't have to, you would have a sticker or a visitor placard, plus the sign could just be used through the months of June, July, and August, or whatever the high period, and then after that, no meters are in, just like they don't enforce, uh, the street cleaning...
Right.
On the, uh...
Right.
I forget which way, direction, north.
Yeah, and that's another, that's another factor here. We suspended that in the summers, um, and I feel like that's still something that we need to continue to do, especially considering all the...
Yeah, it was only Atlantic Avenue and Dorset was still in force.
That's right. Do you have a comment about that?
Yeah, I have a comment.
Thank you.
You're up.
If you can hear that from part of the presentation, there's four hundred and fifty spots, but four thousand permits that are given out every year. We all, that's all sent in now. So no matter what you're doing, I don't know how many of you do it like I do, sometimes you're riding around the block just waiting for that person to get in, and to get that parking spot. Another one of the issues that I found out when I was doing, I did the study, going around literally counting spaces, is that a lot of homes have no longer used their driveways. They now fence them in. A lot of people put gates up and they don't use, they have long driveways that go along this to sign their houses. They don't use them anymore. They don't let that off-street parking because, when I talk to them, they said, "Well, because the cars park so close to the driveways when I want to back out." But what we're doing is you're taking spots that were, that you have for off-street parking and you're not utilizing them. So it's really, I mean, this is gonna be a cooperative effort with everybody, no matter what we do, whether we try and reinvent the wheel, whether we do away with it. Some people are gonna have to make some tough decisions here, maybe give up the four or five cars they have. Oh, no, we do have people that register more than four or five in their own name. So I mean, this is where, this is the problem we have, is that we've not grown it. We've not grown our city. We, back in the seventies and eighties, a lot of families only had one car. Now kids and parents are giving their kids cars when they're 17, everybody gets a car, everybody gets a car. So now, a single-family home has five cars registered to them. So I mean, this is all part of the growing pains, and we're just trying to get ahead because we know what's happening. I have no problem enforcing this. But then you're, some of you are gonna be the collateral damage, too. Or it's gonna be your friendly inviting down for a wine and cheese party, or the 10 people you have, and some of you have no sense to call me and say, "Hey, can you try and give us a little courtesy around this block?" And we do that a lot of times. But we don't get everybody. There's people that do get issued, and it sticks. So like I said, there's not gonna be any one answer that's gonna solve this, no matter what we decide here. It's all gonna be about the patent now, saying, "We're trying to get your one spot for those 90 days." That's really what it's gonna come down to.
So the other, the other thing that a permit does not offer you is a, is a actual spot. It's not a parking location for you. It's the ability to stay in that spot longer than two hours.
That's it.
That's it.
So I just noticed, if I could, Tim, one real quick. I just noticed a lot of people just came in. So you, our meeting started at 5:30 and...
Everything says six. Everything says six.
On, on North Beach? No, it doesn't. Our meetings always start at 5:30.
Yes, it does. Do we ask you to...
No, I'm leaving. If you do it again, I'm leaving. So our meeting...
Okay, so what you missed, so what you missed is that we have a parking problem.
All right. Our meetings have started at 5:30 any evening since we've been in office.
We apologize if there was a mistake.
So if you got bad information, we apologize. What I'm gonna suggest we do, we'll make this available on our website. You can go look at it, read through it. Mr. Cre, Commissioner Crebel did a nice job going through a lot of the details, a lot of the issues we have, a lot of the complaints we get. So we will make that available to you. We're sorry you didn't get here at 5:30, but we're not going through that again. We're just not going to. So come up, ask your questions, we will take them down. We're not gonna make a decision tonight. This is an information gathering meeting. We will probably have some other meetings within a larger venue, because it's a little crowded in here, and, and go a little bit further with it. But we're gonna do a study of these issues through the next four or five months, see how the theater issues are created, see how other issues we have, and try and get to a better solution than we have now. We don't know that we will.
If you'd like to stay after, I'll go over it again with you.
It's true, you know that we usually let issue less than 50 of these parking permit tickets in the summer.
Yep.
That's not a lot. So there's not a lot of people that are affected by this. You call, there's a whole process to this, if you don't know. It's not like, "Oh, this guy's been here all day and calling." No. You call up and you make a complaint. We now have to go down and mark the tire of the car, then come back two hours later. So by the time you call, anytime you call back and complain, so there's a two-hour window where nothing's gonna happen. So just keep that in mind. This is one of the toughest things to enforce. Back in the seventies, eighties, it was much easier. Now it sucks, because people are usually gone within those two hours.
My name is Ed Greys, I live at 28 South Wayman. A couple of questions here. One, he mentioned that it's a challenge to go around and check every two hours to see what's going on.
Right.
Maybe a possible solution is create a summer job for some high school kids or something like that, that you can get at minimum salary or something, and they can go around and come up with a scheme for marking the tickets and going around checking and seeing if they've exceeded two hours. That's one possible recommendation.
Right.
Second thing is, I know where I live, at the end of my street on Ventnor Avenue is a Wawa.
Right.
And right up next to it is this white building that's supposedly gonna be torn down. This is a pretty good-sized lot. Are they looking at possibly buying up some of these lots and making additional parking spaces? Because with the movie theater there, that's gonna be a problem. Who should buy that? The movie theater, the township, whatever? That would open up some parking spaces in that area, so potential...
Really, really good point.
Did you guys add something?
The idea, the, the cost of having, having us enforce this.
Just to add this, the divide line at Frankfurt Avenue, I've got friends, citizens, residents that called me up. They live on Wavy.
Should you show me?
That's a block that's not included with the permit, but their struggle's even worse.
Tim.
Because they don't, they kind of fall in that, that, that region where they don't get protection from parking, they've got all the Wawa people worrying about, and they can't even park on their own block and can rarely get into their own spots. And they do their own around, but they're not covered by the parking. So we've also had to look into, potentially, one of the things that Commissioner didn't cover, was extending that parking even further down into the, into the area of, what is that?
Into Aus, uh...
No, no, the other way. We're coming down to the past Sacramento, I passed to Victoria Avenue.
Victoria.
Where we have all of our, all of our homes and stuff. So I mean, there's a lot of people that live, a lot of residents in those areas, that they don't get that permit parking, but they're sure as heck gonna be affected by the theater going up, because it's right there. So we have to take that into consideration now, a whole bunch of new people that now need more permits because they live on that cusp. So it's not something we want to jump into real quick, I just wanted to add that.
So that, and that's, and that's maybe where the answer is, somewhere in the middle. We're talking about maybe limiting the number, maybe increasing the time that the permits are available so that people can go in and get a movie and get out and not have, and not have a guaranteed ticket, and also maybe extending it in other areas. So maybe that, you know, maybe the Wild West option is necessary. Positive. But to answer your other question about the, there is talk about, of that, that, that building being torn down and potentially, we've heard over here, we're pointing that until something happens, you really can't calm down, but it's possible. Do you have to come up to the microphone and state your name and address if you have a question? Or should we like to...
Right.
You've got, you're in.
I'm in. I got here first. All right, Diane Burkebeck, 3 North Cambridge Avenue. Although I don't live in that section, I am familiar with that area, because I used to work there at 5000 Boardwalk. Offering a couple solutions, thinking outside the box. When I was employed there, it would take us longer, it would take us two hours to find a parking place to go to work, coming in. If there was an off-site parking for employees, people that work in those areas. And we have several buildings with parking areas that are up for sale. Is it feasible to lease those properties, use the parking for the city? It still is up for sale. If somebody buys it, then that is eliminated from parking, but use those facilities for, like, employee parking, off-site, and maybe get, work a shuttle, you know, people work a shuttle to and from the, wherever it is that they're working. And that would eliminate some of the parking that would, that's necessary for people to drive there as employees. The Sun Bank, the Wawa in Ventnor Heights, the old medical building on, across the street from Motion City Bank are, are examples of places that are for sale, and there's parking places.
I mean, it's a, it's a creative thought. Those are pers, those are, you know, properties that are for sale, that are private properties that are getting some, you know, getting some traction. I think, I don't think that's a long-term decision. I think that's, my personal opinion and the bills that I see and the plans that I see for public projects, we have a lot of expenses planned and something like that, I mean, just in terms of public works and the long-term projects that we have. I don't know where, where we could carve that money out.
You're only renting it for three months.
Comes down to insurance.
Yeah. But I mean...
Comes down to insurance. They don't, they don't want us on their property parking.
But, but that, that lot, that lot right around, you know, where I guess it's that, that used to be a, across from the Boobies location, could potentially be something. And I think, I think there was one other, I think, was it Santucci's that was talking about having that?
Shuttle.
A shuttle?
Yep.
So there was a discussion of having a shuttle for their patrons that could also help in that area. It doesn't help North Beach, but these are all part of the growing pains, I think.
And since the bike racks take three or four years to put in...
Oh, that's awful, isn't it, Diane?
Yeah.
It's crazy. Federal money. You can't get it until you're dead.
So I'm sorry about the confusion about the timing. There was apparently some conflict in what the website said or what the North Beach went out to say, but I will go over some of the ideas that we had with anybody who wants to stay. I'll, I'll repeat it. Mr. Sewell?
Sewell, 22 West Drive, Margate. I think you should follow the maxim, "If it ain't broke, don't fix it." Now, I realize the chief's point of view is that he has a problem from mid-June to Labor Day, approximately 10 weeks, 42 weeks of the year, no sweat whatsoever. So if you're going to, you know, tinker with this thing, keep in mind that you have very few complaints, less than 1%. 99% of the people in this room are satisfied with conditions as they are. It would be well to leave well enough alone and not tinker with this thing, with, with looking, having a solution in search of a problem. You know? You know? This is, this is micromanaging, and I think it's way over the pale. And I think you should take a giant step backwards and say, "Hey, we're not having a major problem." The chief will tell you what the problem is in those 10 weeks. It's trying to put 10 pounds of manure in a five-pound bag. It, it's the same problem in Margate or any other city in a barrier island. You just have to live with it.
Right.
And I think, rather than all these elaborate plans and, and machinations, and once again, you say that you don't want to monetize it, but yet it smacks of monetization from A to Z. Stop it. Stop it. Don't do what the vast majority of the people are not in favor of. If you really have doubts about that, then have a plebiscite, have a referendum, you know? But otherwise, you, you know already that there are minimal complaints, less than 1%. So 99% of the residents and the people in the area are satisfied with the annoyances that come in that 10-week period. I can tell you it's just as bad in Margate, if not worse in some cases. But what I tell the better half, it only lasts for 10 weeks, and then you have 42 weeks of unlimited parking. So why make a major issue, a major problem, when there's, when one really doesn't exist? No matter which of these things you do, you'd still have the same migraine headaches. So leave it as it is, keep Pinky Kravitz's noble idea alive and well. You know, it wasn't to monetize things, it was to do something that had a good intention. And all these things will have intentions that go awry very quickly. Leave it as it is. You're gonna find people will be much more satisfied. You don't have, you don't have to micromanage this problem. All right?
Thank you.
My pleasure.
Nice to hear from our Margate neighbor.
What's that?
It's nice to hear from our Margate neighbor.
Yeah. Thank you. He makes good points. I, I can't, I can't disagree with him. I think that, that, but the notion that there's only two hours and a three-hour parking in the theater, I think is potentially gonna be a problem.
Hi, Diane Wall. I'm a new owner in Ventnor, and I'm happy to be here. I moved in last summer. I'm on Little Rock, right off of Ventnor.
Right.
And I was very much dismayed by the parking situation, even just from having Domenico's on my corner.
Right.
Because if I don't get a parking spot in front of my house by Thursday night, Friday morning, then it's just all weekend with the, you know, dinner patrons. So you can see my, you know, dismay at that huge theater opening next door, and they have that tiny little parking lot that they said they're gonna have a theater that's gonna have 120 seats and then a restaurant on top. And I thought I read on one of the Facebook pages that, and I don't know, it could have been about, they were going to tear down a building, but you're saying that may happen.
Well, until it does, it's a, it's a private sale to an underpride entity, it's really not, we've only heard discussions about it so far. So not having seen any sale happen.
Right.
We hope they will.
Yeah. And, and I do try to pull into my driveway and, and use it for that reason, but the problem is that they park right up against it. So I did, as a new owner, I was told I could get permitted lines put in.
Yep.
That's never, they're always right, I leave notes on the car.
But that's one of the adjustments, and adjustments aren't gonna have to be made. It's not as simple as Mr. Sewell says. There's gonna have to be adjustments made.
Right.
And it may be extending with the parking a few more blocks down from permitted parking.
Right. I mean, I would, I, I, I'm just saying, as an owner on that busy block that's gonna get busier, I would gladly pay for a residential parking permit, even though it's not a guaranteed speed, just to avoid that constant, and, and granted, it is only, you know, 100 days a year, but it's the 100 days I want to be down here.
Sure.
You know?
100 days are a nice one.
Right, exactly, exactly. So...
If you're right in that Little Rock area, people are gonna, the other, the other problem is, the traffic flow is very difficult.
Yep.
People are gonna be going back to Ventnor Avenue, are gonna be circling back in these streets to get back to Ventnor Avenue.
Mm-hmm.
So this area is gonna get a lot of the brunt.
What I can tell you is if you do get the templates, you do them properly.
I did, I did.
They're in there.
They're in.
So if somebody does violate that, well, it's just...
Yeah.
We don't, we usually don't tow cars.
Right.
It's really, we try to get away from that, unless it's really a problem or it's a safety issue.
Yeah.
But we will give them a ticket so the person is kind of like slapping on the wrist and people want to say, "Oh, it's only $25." It's $25.
Because there's some days I get down there and I literally can't even swing my car to my driveway.
So how much do you keep us busy in the summer?
Yeah, yeah.
And let it fester and turn into a, you know...
But now, if it's, if it's an issue of parking in my driveway, do you still have to wait two hours for that? Because it's not a, it's not a meter, you would come right away.
No, we have clarified, you are, and we don't like it, but you are not to block your driveway with your own vehicle, that's a discussion. But it does, just think of the person across your street.
Right.
Who was trying to back out.
Right.
You're guarding up blocking.
Yeah, I'm not, I'm not trying to be a, you know, a bad neighbor or anything.
No, yeah.
It's just like, I just have such a hard time with this issue.
We've had all scenarios. We, we know them all, we've heard them all.
Yeah.
And we try to fix them on the fly.
Mm-hmm.
So...
All right. Thank you. Is there, is there a place where people can see where those, those, those parking lines that they can draw?
We can put them online.
We have, we pass, we have them all copied on paper. When you come to the office, we give you a copy. We'll kind of change how, how large, how far from the driveway, and it'll put that.
That's our, that's the Magnificino's in the construction.
Just from the summer, they did get ignored 99% of the time.
Absolutely.
So that was, that was the issue. And I'm, and I'm just so concerned about the theater with all that extra traffic that I...
And that's why we're not gonna make any changes until we see what that effect is.
Yeah.
But our, our suspicion is that it's gonna be, it's gonna be more volume.
Yeah.
Yeah. But like I said, the city had that years ago, and...
It's not gonna be more volume, it's gonna be more volume more than 100 days.
Right, it's gonna be more... Right, it's going to be more...
So maybe the Seattle Golf Park can be off-season as well.
Right.
And that's why we need to observe.
That's the other change here, is that that theater potentially is going to be busy all year round.
Mm-hmm.
You know, the theater that they have in Stone Harbor increased the business of the surrounding businesses by more than twenty percent in the first year.
Yeah.
And the traffic that you see down there in January, they still have, they have, all the meters are full.
Well, I know, when I lived in Marlton, if they were going to have a new building, a new store, a new restaurant, you had to have so many spots. Like if, when they had the permits to get this theater, they didn't say, look, if you're going to have a theater that's going to have a hundred and twenty seats and a restaurant on top...
That theater's been here for a hundred years.
So, right, so...
No, when the new owners bought it, that...
Doesn't matter.
So that, the use was there.
The use was there.
So that, so, so they, they actually reduced the size. Were you here from the beginning?
No.
Okay, so, in the, so one of the things that the, that the theater had, so the theater, when it was originally opened, had nine-hundred-and-sixty-eight seats.
Mm-hmm.
When it changed to a twin theater, it went down to five-hundred-and-eighty-five seats. At the same time, like, as I mentioned, Blues was in the area that had north of, probably north of a hundred and fifty seats. And it's no longer there.
Right.
The new theater's going to have three-hundred-and-twenty seats.
Right.
A hundred and ninety of those seats are in the restaurant for five-hundred-and-ten total. So they didn't have to prove that there was, they needed more parking because there's less volume in that, in that building than you're going to, they're going to see now. And, and they also don't have the large, they have, only have one large theater in the back and two small theaters. So that's, it's not, it's going to be, it's going to be busy, but it's, it's not going to be the same volume as it was when...
I imagine the restaurant will probably be busier because if it's anything like, Domenico's only had, what, maybe enough room for forty people?
But year-round, and that's why we're talking about it.
Okay, all right, well, thank you.
Hi.
Hey, you're up.
Eve Cohen, fifty-two oh seven Winchester Avenue. Uh, I heard you say that you normally will... That's unusual. That you don't tow cars? We have a four-unit condo with five spots, right up the street from the parking lot, from the movie. I am a betting woman and I will bet how many cars will be parked on our lot when the owners go out to dinner or whatnot. What do we do?
Oh, the tow, the parking will tow.
They will be towed.
I mean, like I said, we're going to have to adjust that.
Yeah.
It's going to be different from what it was. There's going to be people's driveways in a block, and if they want to get out, I can tow the car.
Right.
That's always been an issue. But most people will say, you know what, I'm not leaving right now, but if when I come out, you have to tow. And the answer is yes.
Right.
I will tow it. If you're going, if you need that right then to get out, absolutely.
Well, if coming home in the park, you know, it's all parked up with...
Then we possibly tow. That's never been an issue, yeah.
No, we had a car parked on, on July Fourth weekend, two years ago. And the woman said, the officer, I did call the police, they knew who she was, they said, you want me to tow it? Or do you want me to go get her? And I said, just go get her. You brought her back. She parked there because she didn't have any other places to park, on a private parking lot. Yeah.
We know this, we know this.
Yeah, okay, thank you.
Absolutely.
We'll probably be talking about this summer.
Mitchell Corson, five thousand Boardwalk. Are you a moviegoer?
Absolutely.
Well, how could you say that in this area, the movie's going to be busy? I go to the movies two, three times a week to Egg Harbor, anywhere. The movie has never, when now when they select seats, you have to pick your seats in advance, the theater's like, only ten percent of the seats are taken. You're very optimistic to think that that movie's going to cause a prob, that new movie house...
We need to really focus on talking about the parking tonight? That's what this meeting is about?
No, what I'm trying to bring out, that movie house will not cause any more parking problems than before.
I, oh, I, I agree with you. I'm here to, I'm telling you the, what I think, the facts, that's why I put that slide in, because I wrote, there's seventy-five less than the original theater. And I, I went to this theater every single weekend when I was a kid. And...
I'm talking about now.
Yeah.
Okay, I just wanted to make that comment about theater goers are not popular in this area.
This, this theater has a liquor license and has a restaurant.
And I think your theory is flawed though, because I'm telling you that we haven't had a theater. When we did have theaters, we had the Margate Twin, and we had this down here, the Metro Twin. I worked at both and in the class. If you build them, they will come.
I looked at it, it was open, it was normal there at that time, the Metro Theater.
Ernie Shell, one oh eight North Washington. I have a question about double-sided parking on Fredericksburg, but before that, my wife and I went down to look at the beach this morning because we'd had a great time walking on it a couple of days ago. And at high tide, we went deliberately at high tide, the water comes all the way up to the dunes. And that's not a parking problem, but it's a big beach problem here in Ventnor's. Are you aware of all of that? I'm sure you are.
See it every day.
Any plans to deal with it?
We're going to focus on the parking topic right now?
Yeah.
If you wanted to have your comment about the parking, we are going to talk about, we do, we are aware of that, but that's not what we're talking about.
Okay. On Fredericksburg, for a long time, it was one-side only parking, and it was not dangerous at all. Now it's two-side parking. And obviously, the west side is Margate, but having parking on both sides of the street seems to be very dangerous. Somebody tries to get out of their car, and a couple of times, I had to just stop, let somebody get out of their car, let them, you know, it just seems like a bad idea to have two-sided parking.
I think we were the ones who had the parking, correct?
I think we did, yeah.
Right, so I mean, really the issue was, we were there first.
So...
And at the Margate, changed some of their stuff to allow more parking.
Yeah.
And it may inconvenience us, but we really haven't been saying any of that.
Right, and you're, you're talking about Fredericksburg Avenue?
Fredericksburg.
That's not on North Beach.
Pardon me?
No, but it was a park, so you kind of let it slide in.
Yeah, so you're two for two.
He was on side.
That's not a parking issue? How is that not...
We're talking, it's not a, it's not, so you're, this, this meeting is about two-hour parking in the North Beach area.
Ah.
And...
Do you have an open session after this?
You could come, the, the door's always open here.
No, I didn't mean that. All right.
Yes.
So, and when does that, that starts after all of this is done?
Yeah.
Okay, thank you.
Good evening, Richard Gober, twenty-six North Hillside Avenue. First of all, gentlemen, good luck with your campaign. You've done a great job for us, we appreciate that, we wish you luck. Second of all, I'd like to thank you very much for at least allowing the public to be heard about this issue. We hope eventually that you'll consider, and we love hearing, North Beach, North Beach, North Beach, North Beach. That's really great. Doug, for clarification, just so some people might not have understood, as a homeowner, you cannot park behind your own driveway.
As a homeowner, you can, you can...
You block it.
You can block it, physically block it, but you can't park and block the sidewalk.
Okay.
You can park, you can block your, but here's the issue. The issue is, if you understand the law, the law was set up so the vehicles that were backing out of their vehicles from across the street had that able, the ability to make that kind of K-turnish, that, that turn and swoop motion. If you're blocking your driveway, you're almost begging your car to get hit by anybody backing down across the street.
Okay. So just for clarification, because other communities I've been involved with, I have been taught, and I don't, have never seen the law, I've been taught that you cannot park even behind, what I mean is, driveway's coming this way, you cannot even park in front of your own home's driveway. Is that incorrect?
That is incorrect, because that's dug by city ordinance, so our ordinance does not do that. The state allows you to adjust things accordingly depending on how your town's set up.
Right. Okay. All right. Some other committees have also told me that you're no longer, believe it or not, allowed, maybe this is not true, also hearsay situation here, can you legally stall marked tires?
No, you cannot.
You cannot?
Because, and I would explain that, that's why the enforcement of the two-hour parking, three-hour parking is so much easier, it's so much harder now, is because, and I hate to say it because I'm a very moderate Republican, is that somebody went to somebody in the ACL year or wherever, and they said, well, these cops, you know, they're so vicious, they're even defacing my car with this chalk. Listen, anybody who's ever sat with three kids or kids on the sidewalk, you know it's going to wash you away. But this is a fact, we're not allowed to chalk tires now. So I'm an issue spray can, of course, because, you know... But, um, yeah, so we have to find a different way of doing it. So what we literally have to do is chalk the, each side of the tire on these, on the asphalt. Oh, yeah, it's fine. My guy, they, they're just, you know, they're, yeah. So, yeah, that's what it's like. And then the person, because people basically lie, um, they will go and they'll pour their water on it and say, oh, look, and they'll take a picture, and they'll break into the jar, and oh, there you go, it's thrown out. So this is what we do.
You've had your three minutes.
Yeah, I'm sorry. Hey, not just this, so I won't get out.
Now, we used to have employees in Ventnor that used to walk down the streets.
We still do.
We still do, haven't, just out of curiosity. All right. John Soul did say something that I had my little notes here, and that is, if it ain't broke, don't fix it, okay? So, in my thirties some years here, maybe close to four, matter of fact, about thirty-eight years in Ventnor, I don't think I've ever heard anybody complain personally to me about the parking situation in our area. They did complain occasionally that there are people in the condos that were allowed to park there, but some condos, I don't know this, charge a certain amount of money so they parked on the street. That was the only thing in all these years that I ever, ever heard, people are always constantly trying to find spots, you know, to, to where to park. No doubt, we're concerned because we feel that we're here tonight because of the movie theater. So that issue, so we have never talked about this before that I can remember. And I'm really a little disappointed in the planning board because quite frankly, the gentleman with this movie theater, I'm proud, I'm excited, it's the only movie theater on the island.
The only one.
I personally went to the state of New Jersey and the federal government to get that to be put on the National Historic Registry years ago. And so unfortunately, the Frank's family fought me on that issue. And I didn't blame them because they were under agreement of sale, to sell it for a lot of money, and the redevelopment battle ended, and then they lost that buyer at the time. So what I'm concerned with is knowing that it has that, what I don't understand is how in the world, with the planning board, they're spending a couple million dollars, I've heard astronomical amount of money, they're spending much, much more on the movie theater itself than they even anticipated. Why didn't they build a two-story parking lot back there? Why didn't they do that?
So I can...
Go ahead.
So when you have a use on a property and it is historically deficient in parking, legally you are allowed to retain that deficiency with your new use. So they had a historic deficiency in parking, they didn't have any. They, I think they're getting sixteen spaces in the back of their, seventeen maybe.
Yeah.
So they were able to provide as much as they could.
You would have lost that case.
They, they legally did not have to provide.
No, they didn't have to. But if you own the, the movie theater, and if these customers can't park there, eventually they're going to give up.
So you want to build a parking garage?
Well, I want them to have, we're here now to please...
Next to residential families living in their backyard on a parking garage.
Well, something, yes, I, you know, unfortunately, in other words, as John Soul said, if it ain't broke, don't fix it, okay? But the reason we're here is because we know with the three-hundred seats, and we, I disagree with the gentleman, I think there will be a lot of customers there having dinner there.
I agree, there will be.
And what I don't want to do is find a person who pays seven thousand dollars real estate taxes, coming home from work at six-thirty and not being able, even with his parking permit. You know, we, as we know, it's not guaranteed. But with that, he's going to have a hard time finding a parking spot. So we agree, we're glad you're open, we're glad you're, allow the permits for this year, for one year, and, and that's good, but I'm, I just think that personally, I'm a businessman for fifty years old. I'm fifty, fifty years and I'm seventy-four years old in April, and I agree, if it don't, if it ain't broke, don't fix it. So I live with that. Let me just look at my notes for a minute. So there's just rumors right now about the Bubbies situation, is that, is that, okay. The city's not buying Bubbies at this, okay, good.
They're not.
All right, good. I'm very, very happy to hear that the city's not buying that. I guess my main concerns is just that we want to, oh, by the way, in order to be somewhat prepared here, I had a wise gentleman tell me that ninety-nine percent of the case is in preparation. I walked the streets from Frankfurt in the north and south block yesterday, and I believe we're pretty close to fifty-fifty. I saw big driveways, like you mentioned, room for, they can rent their, whoops, whoops. They'd have it. They can rent their driveways out if they want to.
Five minutes delay on the camera.
But fifty percent, I believe, it's about fifty percent when you count the condos and the apartments, that there's probably fifty percent of them have not one parking spot in North Beach. And so, and so knowing that, we're just concerned. We appreciate you listening to us, we hope your final decision rests on your shoulders, and we hope you take into consideration what the North Peach Beach residents are concerned with. Thank you very much for the time.
In the interest of time, we'll take one more question, and then I'd be happy to...
Sorry about the time because we were under the depression of sixty-five seconds.
Yeah, I apologize. And I will say, if you, I think the meeting itself, as we go through, should be pretty quick, and the presentation's quick, so if you want to stay, I'll run it down again.
Hi, um, I almost forgot what I was going to say. I'm not from North Beach, I'm from up...
Ma'am, could you tell your name?
Up here Lafayette, Lafayette.
What's your name and your address?
Um, Helene Metzger for North Lafayette.
Okay.
Um, I realize there's lots of things that are going on with North Beach, and I understand the parking situation, and I understand Ventnor's going growth. My problem is, and I'm probably going to be told like the other guy about the beach, we need to do something about the beach. If you're getting people to come down here, loving Ventnor, you got to give them something. Okay, there's a lot of people, you know...
So briefly?
Yeah.
The beach erosion is a, is a, is a seasonal problem, it's also, it's also, we're limited as, as terms of the municipality, what we can do to fix it. It's a, it's a federal replenishment plan. We're not here really to talk about that.
Oh, I understand. I'm...
We have, we've met with the DEP.
I can, I, since we've had two questions. So our, our city engineer had a meeting with the Army Corps and the DEP, and we are on schedule for a replenishment at the earliest this coming fall, at the latest next spring. So they will not come back in and fix that this summer, will not happen. Our funds have to be federally authorized, that we hope happens this month, but that will set in time, set in place the timeline for February, or not February, excuse me, the fall of twenty twenty, or the spring of twenty twenty-one. So right now, we cannot do anything about where that tide comes up to the dunes.
It's just a shame because you're going to drive people away.
Well, the...
No, seriously.
The city's responsibilities in the, right away, is in the walkway and the access, not in the actual beach.
Right.
And with all, I mean, there are other beach areas in North Carolina that, that all up and down the east coast that have this kind of erosion. We can't, there, there's very limited, we, we can't literally go out and put the, spend millions of dollars to replenish it on the taxpayers.
Okay, now, and I understand that, we don't, we don't get a lot of resources...
Let me finish, I wasn't quite finished. So what we are going to do is we are going to dress up the beaches behind the boardwalk like they used to be. If you look at old photographs, the ocean came right up to the boardwalk, and people sat behind the boardwalk in that area before the dunes.
I remember, yes.
Before the dunes were put in. So that were, you know, that's not the ideal situation, but that's something we're going to work on for this summer, to have those areas cleaned, raked every day like the rest of, we're buying a new beach rake that will fit back there. And we're going to, to dress those areas up. What we also hope to be able to do is, well, what we hope will happen, so if, if you watch the sand, what happens is in the wintertime, that sand goes offshore, about a hundred and fifty yards. If you were on that beach this summer, because it was my son's beach, it was a lifeguard there at Buffalo Avenue, that sand was right there, it was maybe a hundred yards off the beach, because you saw the gullies come in. And if you went to the beach, when the tide went out, you had a four-foot-deep gully of water. So that's the sand that's typically on that beach. It didn't come back last year. It's like, it's cyclical. In the winters, it goes offshore, and then it comes back on in, in the summertime. So we're hoping we get some, some more stronger, you know, offshore winds to, to push that sand back in, and currents. But we can't control that. There's, there's, we met with the DEP and the Army Corps, they said, look, we will replenish it, we will bring back that same beach again when they do their three-year cycle, and that's what they're on.
Well, it, it seems to be, you know, there are, really, people are not going to invest if there's, that's the problem.
That, that's...
You know, and rentals and all of those things are going to be impacted.
We've, we've done, they, they had a...
Can we get back to the point of the meeting and the...
No, I understand, so are we going to have...
If you'd like to stay, there's the open public at the sec, at the, and you can also stay, we're going, we're working on an update from the DEP on our website and the newsletter that comes out. If you signed up for the Vendor City newsletter on vendorcity.org, it'll write to your email, you'll get the most up-to-date information that we have on it.
Okay.
That's the best information.
Okay.
Thank you.
About parking?
Hi.
Zaya?
My name's Joe DeLuca. I live on Little Rock Ave, North Little Rock. I'm just curious. I'm a year-round renter, and I'm wondering if the permit parking is going to affect that? Or do you have to actually be an owner? Like, I rent for my... I rent for my neighbors.
Have the same... If you have a car registered, you can come and get it.
Little Rock's not included yet.
What's that? Little Rock is not included.
Little Rock is not part of that.
Oh, Little Rock. Right. So your area is not in part of the... Isn't in part of the zone that is... That is... That has permit parking. So we're talking about extending it as a result of...
Okay. I thought I read that there was an extension because I walked down my block from Ventnor to the Bulkhead. There's 14 houses. Three houses have driveways. All my neighbors that are owners and renters, street parking. So I mean, I'm psyched about the movie theater. I can walk there in 30 seconds. So I'm just concerned that, you know, even in the summertime, when I come home from working nights, I work at various... I have a couple of different jobs, and I work at night most of the time. And when Dominico's was open, I had to wait till the staff and the customers were gone to get my spot back in front of my house.
And the permit doesn't give you a spot.
Right. I know it's not a spot, but I mean, at least you have a chance.
But it does give you the ability not to get a ticket.
But I was just confused whether, you know, if you're a renter, you know...
You get the same rights as someone who owns a property.
Okay.
You would... If we extend to Little Rock, you would get that same right to be able to purchase a permit.
The discussion was actually extending it to Victoria.
Yeah.
Because, like I said, the traffic pattern is going to go around the theater. It's going to follow this sort of snaking streets, and it's going to dump it onto people on the...
Well, the parking lot, literally, almost... My neighbor behind me, the parking lot goes to them, and then I'm on Winchester and Little Rock. So I mean, it's going to wiggle around that whole area. So... Okay, thank you.
No, thank you. All right. Last one, and then we'll go on to our meeting. And if, like I said, if you want to stick around.
I have another issue with the theater that I... I wanted to know, is there going to be bike parking by the theater? Because a lot of us would just ride our bikes because we know we can't park.
So on that corner of Waymouth?
Unfortunately, it takes ten years to make a bike rack.
They're making it from ore coming from the center of the earth, apparently.
Yeah.
They are... They are having plans for a bike rack?
So yes. So we actually... And part of the plans, and Diane, correct me if I'm wrong, if you're still here, we had a corral there on the corner of Waymouth and Ventnor Avenue set up. So it'll be that where you can't park a car, we're going to be able to put some bicycles in there. And we've talked to the theater about doing a bike rack there as well, so... Before we...
That's great. I'm Amy Rudman from Melbourne Avenue. And we really would because I went there every weekend as a kid, too. And we rode our bikes.
Bikes. Bikes. Yeah, we'll get through real quick. What we'll do is so...
We'll go through the meeting real quick, and then we'll do this again for the people on North Beach to get a chance to see it.
Okay.
Can the department heads go?
I think everybody but Ed. Sorry, Ed. Yeah.
I was going to say, you could put it down on television if you wanted.
No. You want to do that while we're... Yeah, we want to do that while we go through the meeting so then we can pull that down.
Yeah. That'd be great. Thanks.
Do you guys have any questions? Just a... All you need to do is...
Can you just do it for me? Because we're going to start hitting.
Yeah, great.
All right. We get quiet, guys? We're going to finish our meeting real quick, and then we'll have a... We'll recirculate this discussion. So we don't have department head reports this week. No Capitol discussion, no minutes to pass. We have a couple of ordinance introductions. 2020... That's 001, calendar year ordinance. Guys, we've got to conduct this meeting so it can be heard on the record. Please be quiet. To extend the municipal budget appropriation limits and establish a cap bank, ordinance 2020-002, that's a lot of twos, an ordinance of the City of Ventnor, County of Atlantic, Chapter 38 Police Department deleting the entirety, Section 3810 Deputy Chief, from the code. Introduction of 2020-003. That one is Chapter 40 Recreation Commissioners Board, Section 41-7 Recreational Programs and Activities. Introduce 004, which is creating by definition a large event and the procedures to be followed for special events. We will have ordinance... We have no ordinance, public hearings or adoptions this evening. Public hearing hardship street opening for 114 South Portland Avenue. That'll happen in our formal session of our committee commission, excuse me. Then we have Resolutions 2020-057 through 092. Only one of them will be taken out, item Z. We have to table that until we have the mayor here to vote, and we will do that next month. So real brief, I'm going to try and go through these quick. So Resolution 057 is for refund of water sewer overpayment. 58 is accepting resignation of Anthony Santuro. 59, accepting resignation of Joseph Welsh. These are firemen that are moving back to Atlantic City. 060 for Ronald Layeli, and 061 from Joshua Murillo Suarez. Later on in the agenda, you'll see that we're hiring three new firemen here back to fill those back spaces. Resolution 062 is execution of a tax abatement continuation agreement with 111 North Martindale Avenue. 063 is a street opening hardship permit for Block 27, Lot 1.03, 116 South Stratford Avenue, on behalf of contractor Ben Chapman. 064, also a hardship opening for Mr. Chapman on Block 18, Lot 11.02, 5900 Boardwalk. 065 is for municipal solid waste and bulky waste recycling, collection, and roll-off pull parts, purchase shared services agreement. 066 is authorizing use of competitive contracting for the procurement of solar power purchase agreement. That was the result of a joint project with the City of Margate to provide energy efficiencies through both communities, the municipal buildings, and schools.
Correct.
Okay? Just so you're aware of that. 067, tax abatement continuation agreement, Block 135, Lot 9, condo C0002, also known as 113 North Martindale. 068 is charges and fees for the year 2020 for the Recreation Department of the City of Ventnor. 069, authorizing shared services of Atlantic County Utilities Authority for digital media consulting services. 070, authorizing approval to submit an application and execute agreement for the community-oriented policing services grant. And here's the firefighters. So we have 071, authorizing the hiring of firefighters for the City of Ventnor. Resolutions 072 authorize the hiring of Larry Huff to Public Works Department. These are backfilled positions, not new positions. Awarding a bid of... Resolution 073, awarding a bid for window replacement miscellaneous building parts. This is for the library. 074, accepting the retirement of Ron Weintraub. Ron is one of our assistants here in City Hall, and he's been here quite a long time.
Really?
He's a great little asset. He helps a lot of residents out here. If you've ever met Ron, he's just a great personality to have here in the city. And he'll certainly be missed.
Sorry to see him go.
Yeah. 075 is adjusting the salary of the Chief Financial Officer, Albert Stanley. 076...
This is his anniversary date, his first year increase.
Right. He went through that.
It's an annual increase.
Annual increase, right.
Not just a salary increase.
It's not a random...
Right.
Ron, not a random increase. Great job, Al. 076 is appointing Sean Clancy as a member of the 2020 Municipal Alliance Committee. Sean's a great resident of the community and was with our... He was in the county prosecutor's office for years. Does a great job for our community in actually training kids to be detectives. He has like a detective school that he does, so... 077 is awarding El Ferriozzi Concrete to repair three storm drain inlets at Nashville Avenue and Ventnor Avenue, Surrey Avenue and Winchester and Harvard Avenues. City of Ventnor not to exceed $19,850. Ed, do we need anything more on that, or is that...
No, it's relocation. Different repairs on each inlet.
Okay. Good. All right. Resolution 078, authorizing the hire of temporary employee Dina Marie Bonifiglia as a recreation aide. She's going to help with special event coordination and things of that nature, correct?
Correct.
079 is approving self-examination of 2020 municipal budget. 080 is amending Resolution 373 of 2018 to lease a temporary fabric structure for the Ventnor City Fire Department. That's our temporary housing of our vehicles. 081 is awarding bid for furnishing delivering residential cold meters or water meters with the option to renew for one additional year. 82 is going to be tabled until next meeting. 8083, identifying a pool of city engineers for the city that would contract on an as-needed basis, and that'll also be a shared services with Ventnor and Margate. We do our engineers in a pool. We have six engineering firms, right, Ed? Six?
I believe there's seven this year.
Seven this year? Okay. 084 is amending Resolution 337 of 2019 for planning and design and construction service phases reconstruction of Hampshire Drive, Balfour Avenue to... From Balfour Avenue to Balfour Avenue to Ventnor City. That doesn't... Yeah, because it loops around. Ed, if you could give me just a brief update on that one? That's where the sewer... We had the sewer collapse.
This is the glacial.
Yes. Yeah.
The commission awarded contract to the glacial engineering to do repaying of Hampshire Avenue as a municipal paid grant that we received and funded by this point in grant. About two weeks before we went out to bid on that project, we had a sewer main collapse on that street for investigation that the entire remaining sewer has to be replaced. We want to replace it, provide it to the paving. So we are... Our recommendation for the commissioners to manage the engineers' contract to include the design and the contract management and inspection of the sewer replacement as well as to add that fault to the contract for designing and paving.
And it's an efficient way to do it because he's got all the data already, so it's a good way to do it. Resolution 085 is accepting resignation of Kathleen Gunter. She was a Class II police officer. 086, authorizing rejection of bid for the chlorination tablet conversion main plant. Bids just came in way out of our cost range. So we'll have to rethink that and go back out to bid. 087 is authorizing no parking during the block party. So the spring block party will happen this spring, early May, if I recall.
Yep.
8088 is the authorizing indemnification of Atlantic County for that same block party. That portion of Ventnor Avenue is a county road. 089, authorizing a change order request, 1 to 5, for new construction of Firehouse Number 2. And from what I understand, one, this is an increase now, but as we come through some other change orders, that will bring the number back down.
Correct.
It's almost a net zero.
Correct. There's some changes now that exactly what you stated. The end result should be a net zero.
Can someone silence that phone, please? It's a little distracting. Thank you. 090, authorizes adoption of formal application for special events. I know Tim's... Now it's just funny. It's all right. We got to laugh out of it. It's fine. Right. The... I know Commissioner Kribb, you've been working a lot with... So the... Well, we have new forums. Let's move on. 091, accepting and adopting domestic violence policy for public employees. It's part of our handbook, I'm assuming.
Correct.
Yeah, it will be.
092, authorizing bids to be solicited in providing maintaining exterior advertising on the boardwalk, lifeboats, and business districts.
Correct.
So that's good.
Yeah. It's a way, I think, to help bring in some revenue and also beautify the city in some way.
So then we'll go into our bills and payrolls, discussion items. You want to do them right now?
Yes.
Let's hit those right now while we're on a roll. So the first discussion item is hardship street openings for 5115 Boardwalk. And then there's one right after that, 110 South Melbourne. Mr. Ballson? And Ed can chime in if he needs to.
Chris Ballson, for the record. I have both of those properties, Haswell, Melbourne, and Hoffman on...
Stand in front of the...
Yeah. Hoffman on Amherst. Both properties, new construction. Water and sewer need to be connected. You know, people... Both houses are up-sided, you know, ready. Interiors are being done now. The... Both applicants are willing to do whatever the city requires in terms of the infrared patch, so it blends. I understand there has been an ordinance adopted requiring the homeowner to pay for the laterals for both water and sewer, for the connection from the curb out to the main.
Right.
If that's in fact a requirement, that'll be imposed. It's understood. And whatever else the city requires, they will do it to make the street appear as if it didn't happen as best as that can be done.
Great. And part of this is the city's policy to look at old connections with the sewer and water lines in our street. A lot of the old water connections are lead connections. So as we go through that, we're getting them taken out.
And there is inspection done when the trench is dug.
Yep.
And my question is if those laterals appear to be satisfactory or better than satisfactory, do they need to be replaced?
Defer to Ed on that.
No, they wouldn't get yours. We were certain of our old galvanized lines.
The Amherst or both?
I don't know. We both...
Okay.
But certainly, and part of the process is submission to the Water and Sewer Department. We send our guy down there. It's verified. If it's a copper service, we don't have to even dig it up with the copper service. You have to have the meter for the curb slot. If most of... My understanding, both properties have galvanized. They're lead waste and...
Right.
So the contractor will notify Public Works when that works going to be done so they can come down? Okay? I mean, that's...
All right.
Whatever the criteria was, it was all satisfactory.
Okay.
For both properties.
So we...
Mike Christman is the contractor on Amherst.
Okay.
Which is 51 Boardwalk, I think.
Right.
And he can... Would like to add something, just for the city's...
I've just had a couple of questions. So the water department was out there, and it seems like the sewer connection is okay. In fact, we've already connected to that line. So are you saying if that's a galvanized line, that that would have to be replaced also?
The galvanized line is...
Would be the water, right.
We'll make a determination on each existing sewer.
Okay.
So the sanitary sewer is sufficient. We will not require replacement. But the water... Essentially, what it is is us evaluating whether that...
Yeah. We want to re... We've been told it's a three-quarter line for the water, and we don't... Obviously, that's not good. So we're... We would want to replace that. But I guess the only other thing I have to say is that we just found out about all this about two weeks ago. So maybe it'd be a good idea when you apply for a building permit that...
So we... I'm sorry. But we have changed... We have made that change. So now, any application to the construction office...
Right.
One of the papers that you will be given is an application for water and sewer service.
Okay, that's good.
So it starts at the very beginning.
Right.
Did this change occur? You were already in the street? So we've made that change.
Okay.
And that's whether it was a moratorium or not. That deals with connections.
Right.
Every year, construction is going to have basically a request for the Water and Sewer Department in terms of whether or not we have the water.
Right. And the other thing is, we didn't know about the moratorium either. And so we applied for...
That is done by ordinance, and I think that's...
After any street in the city's paved, you can't cut into it without...
Right. But I'm just saying, when we... When I applied for the building permit, nobody said there was a...
And that's all been changed as well.
All right, good.
So...
Because I, you know, it's just...
It's been noted.
I'm not... It's just... Yeah, it's good that it got changed because, you know, we wouldn't be in this situation. That's all I'm saying.
Agreed. What... The purpose of what we're trying to do is to stop problems down the road.
Right.
If you're building a brand-new house or renovating an older home, and you're doing enough improvements to it, we don't want to have the stuff in the street, the sewer and the water lines break, and then we have to come in and fix them at everybody's expectation.
I totally agree with that. My main point is that...
Has to be coordinated better.
And rectified. But we didn't know anything about this when we started the bill passed.
Completely agree.
And we appreciate the commissioner moving it up to a two-week process. At least this is rather than... And we appreciate Commissioner moving it up to a two-week process, at least this is rather than.
The public hearing on this will be at our.
Next meeting.
Our next meeting, February.
Twenty-seventh, I think it is.
The twenty-seventh?
And notices will go out in time to.
Good, and we're working on that process too, we wanna try and streamline this as much as we can.
Great, appreciate it.
Thanks for coming out, thank you.
Twenty-seventh?
Yes.
Thank you. So that was the presentation.
Thank you. Coming from you, that's a good. Okay, we have, uh, we're gonna table the second night, whether that's even on an agenda, so we're gonna push that to our next meeting. Dean Randazzo Cancer Foundation Resolution, is Brady, Brady, you're here?
Yes.
I am.
Man, I got my notes here, good.
How's everybody doing tonight? Brady Middlesworth, I'll make my presentation quick. I am the present, uh, president of the Dean Randazzo Cancer Foundation, um, an organization that was founded in two thousand and one to raise money and donate it back to cancer victims in the community. We have three big events every year, one is a surf contest that we have in Margate, the other is either a concert or a comedy show. This year's is gonna be at the Hard Rock Casino in November, and what I'm here today about is our Around the Island Paddle. For the last ten years, eight or ten years, we've had it at, uh, From the Marina, Golden Nugget After Party, and we'd like to move it to Ski Beach. So, we have about, we have about a hundred and twenty participants on average over the last ten years, not all of them paddle around the island. Uh, I would, I would say on average about fifty paddle around the island, and the rest do a fun paddle of six to eight miles, something like that.
Fun, that's still fun.
It's only, it's a couple, it'll take a couple hours for the fun.
Fun?
Yeah.
Yeah, well compared to Around the Island, it's.
Is there one with a motor on it, that?
No. That's the family paddle.
That's the family. In our, over the course of our existence, we've raised close to a million dollars, donated it to, uh, people who have cancer and are, are in need of money. So I'm here for two reasons, one, to ask your permission to hold the event, uh, at Ski Beach this year, it'll be June thirteenth, and two, to see if you will be kind enough to waive the fees associated with withholding the event there.
Okay, thrilled to have the event here.
Yeah.
I mean, we're, thank you for even approaching us on that.
Yeah.
You know, the Randazzo Cancer Fund, I've been to their, their events, not the paddling ones, obviously, um, but the fundraisers, they do a great job, they do a great work in our community and for the families that are struggling, so we certainly appreciate that.
Yeah.
And Ski Beach is a great venue for it.
Yeah, we're, we're glad it's being, you know, it's getting more, uh, it's getting more play, it's getting more, people are starting to get used to using it. I, I, I have a little bit of a problem waiving all the fees, but I think we can waive the majority of them.
Yeah.
Um, I, I think the, um, I think we have hundreds of events and they're all, um, they're all worthy causes, so it's not fair to put one above another in some ways, but it is absolutely a worthy cause. So your events call for a type C event, a hundred dollars, I think we could waive that, that Ski Beach fee is two hundred and fifty dollars, I think we can waive that. The refundable security deposit, I think that's more of a legal thing that.
No problem.
I think, and that's refundable, right?
Absolutely.
So that, um, the temporary vendor, fifty dollars, I think we can waive that, the application fees, twenty-five, I think we can waive that. Uh, the trash cans, uh, two hundred dollars, I think we can waive that, and the barricades, I think we can waive that, the things that, um, the taxpayers pay for are the police. Um, so they're, we're looking at a minimum of three hours at two hundred and fifty dollars.
We have no problem paying that.
I think that's only fair to the taxpayer.
Counting that up, I got the same comment, same check marks, so that's about eight hundred and five bucks instead of the fifteen hundred.
That'd be great, we appreciate that.
Were you, same, same number, Tim?
Yeah, except I think we're, I don't, I think, I don't think we should charge for fifty dollars for mowing.
We cut it anyway.
Yeah, we cut it anyway.
We can knock that down.
So I think we can just leave it at the, at the police, um.
Yeah.
That was suggested, I don't think that's.
Yeah, just the police and the security.
Does that make sense?
Go with that.
Wait everything but the security deposit and the police labor.
Correct.
Okay.
Okay.
But you would still have to apply for a special advance permit?
Yeah, fill out the forms, make, yeah.
We, uh, we have filled out the forms, and I think, uh, Donna Peterson has emailed, I think, uh.
Lisa, is it on the agenda to approve the event tonight?
I, I do have a resolution prepared, just with Mr. McGuire adding verbiage in about the two items that they will be responsible for pay.
That's fine.
But you also have the resolution to approve the event?
Yes, it's all.
As well as the waiver.
It's all on one.
Okay.
Yeah.
We'll add that.
So you make a motion to add it to the consent agenda?
Okay, right, you wanna do that now? Okay.
Alright, I thank you for your time and, and your waiving of the fees, appreciate it.
Thank you.
And, excuse me, and everybody else involved and our recipients appreciate it as well, so, thank you.
Thank you. Thanks, Brady, I'll ask for a motion to add Resolution Number.
Zero ninety-three.
Zero ninety-three to our consent agenda?
Uh, motion to add, uh, zero ninety-three to our consent agenda as described.
My second, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. So we'll do that, alright, so that's been added, so I'll make a note of that on my thing here. Okay, so now we open it up to the public for items that we've already talked about tonight, it's save the parking, 'cause I think we're gonna.
I'll redo that.
You're gonna redo that one?
Sure.
But anything else you wanna talk about, the beach, anything else you guys wanna talk about, please come up, state your name, and.
Maybe we can go a little more depth?
Tell us your, your concerns. It's good to have people here.
Yeah.
We usually talk to ourselves here. And Nanette?
Hi, Amy Rudman, in South Melbourne, um, I still have concerns about the beach. You've got a lot of people that come with young kids, and if you ask the parents to set up camp behind the boardwalk, they can't see the kids.
We're not asking them to do that, we're gonna provide that opportunity, what you're gonna end up having to do is move to a different beach, if, if the high tide comes up, there's, we can't fix that. I don't, I don't know how else to answer that question, it's not something that we.
I, I, we appreciate and we empathize, but it's a natural, it's just like, um, we, we, our, our jurisdiction ends at the bulkhead, we can't affect what happens in the bay, and we can't affect what happens over the dune beyond what the, what the walkovers provide.
And we sit on the dune?
So, you can't sit on the dune because that's, that's federally protected as well, so we, we are a beach town, I get, we, we, we totally empathize with that, but.
So where will be the beach to go to even?
Well, there's, it's only about six blocks it's affected, six to ten blocks that are, you're gonna have to go north or south, so I.
So I gotta go to Margate, really?
No.
No, no, no.
There's six to ten blocks from, say, Buffalo or Richards, so it's between the Margate and the, and the Ventnor Fishing Piers, that's where we get our erosion.
That's where I am, yeah.
But if you, but if you go north of the pier, there's no issues there at all.
If I go north of the pier, I need a parking spot.
Right. Right. North Beach, you go north.
That was the other meeting.
Yeah.
Now we're not talking about.
So, so.
Because I can't ride the bike with all the beach stuff.
Right, understand that, but we cannot put, we cannot take sand from anywhere and put it on the beach, we are not allowed to do that. Without getting permits like the Army Corps does, like the DEP grants, we cannot do that, uh, we don't have the funding for it, for one, where are we getting the sand? We don't have the ability to go hire a bar, a dredge, to dredge that material up and bring it onto the beach. We will, we are hope, so I, I implore everybody to go look at, at historical aerials of this area, this is always.
I've got the pictures hanging in my house.
There's one in the mayor's office.
Of us sitting under the boardwalk, I love that picture.
Right, yeah, the boardwalk in the eighties was the water, that was high tide line.
Yeah.
This is the same beach line, really, that it's always been there, just the dunes actually are keeping it back some. It's not ideal, but there's not a lot that we can do as your governing body, we've tried, we've sat down, Ed has had a meeting with the Army Corps and the DEP to look for solutions, and they said, look, we will fix it. We are, we are on a three-year cycle to get these beach replenishments, and they did it two and a half years ago, we're, we're on that cycle again. They've somehow miraculously said they don't have to do it in the summertime, which was always what they told us in the past, go figure, DEP changes their mind. So they're now able to do it in the off-season, which is great, but it's gonna be either in the fall or the spring, it's not gonna be this spring, it's just not, the funding's not there, and, and that's a federal entity that, that funds this. This money comes out of the federal government to do these beach replenishment projects in FEMA.
So what, what will be the handicap accessibility from the Margate border to the fishing pier?
So we have several beaches that are handicapped accessible, there we.
Well, now they've got cliffs, so.
They don't have cliffs anymore.
Well, there was never, there was never handicap in that, in that, the handicap access is at the library.
Right.
Right.
And at, um, the tennis courts, and those are still, those still will have.
And don't forget, you can call the lifeguard headquarters and they will transport anybody to any beach.
Right, that's, well, that's what we were using, they'll, so they're still gonna be.
They're still gonna be doing that, they'll figure out a way, you may end up.
They will come get you at your, at, at the beach entrance and they'll take you to, to your spot.
Maybe riding that buggy on the street a little bit.
Yeah.
But they'll, they'll do it.
We sympathize with you, but that's my son's beach, as I said, and, and this past summer, the, the lifeguard stand at high tide, full moon high tide, the back struts of that thing were sitting on the toe of the dune.
I saw, yeah, that's my beach, yeah.
Yeah, so I wish I had a better answer for you, I, you know.
See where the fight went with Margate too, they tried to fight the dunes, and that is, that's the difference, and they, they lost, but they, they spent two hundred and seventy thousand dollars, I think, to spend that fight, and we weren't prepared to do that.
Alright, thank you.
Thank you.
Is parking somewhere else allowed to be spoken about?
Yeah, uh, I guess, it's.
Not that area.
Yeah, other than North Beach?
Okay, yeah, this, um, Janus Albuck, one thirty North Cambridge, um, I live catty corner from Ventnor on the Bay. I live, uh, directly across from a vacation rental by owner, weekly or less sometimes, down the block, another Airbnb, one right behind me, Airbnb. One thing, when, when you were talking about that parking, one of the differences is the size of the cars.
Right.
Vehicles are, you know, one and a half times the size, these streets are houses, I don't have a parking spot. You know, one car would fit in front of my house, but if somebody has a big SUV or somebody has one of these big trucks, that's a spot and a half.
Right.
Um, now you bring in these weekly Airbnbs or vacation rental by owner, and where it used to be, they'd come for a month and they would spread out their guests.
Right.
Now, it's a, all week, um, I have to tell you, all summer long, I never, after Thursday evening, my car doesn't move till I go to my Pilates class on Monday morning.
Right.
Late Monday morning, it's ridicu, I mean, unless I, everybody knows, unless I can walk, bike, or you come and get me, I can't move my car because I can't get back anywhere near.
That's everywhere in the city.
And that is every.
We have the same issue, I live right here behind City Hall, on, on Thursday nights, Fridays, I park my car and it doesn't move.
You don't have a, do you have a, you don't have a.
I have off-street parking, so those, that's the car that will move.
Well, now that's the other thing.
But if there's on, if one of my vehicles on the street, it doesn't move.
Right.
Some homes don't have that, I agree.
And some, like across the street, they have two parking spots, but they'll put them on the street and leave it for their guests.
I mentioned that, I think.
Ventnor on the Bay, they put their cars on the street.
Oh, that's horrible, they have their own lot.
They love my spot, I'm right at the corner there.
Right.
You know, they're like, wow, how convenient, um, I can't get near my place.
Well, yeah, we can't, we can't, um, we can't really enforce bad behavior, 'cause that's what that is, and that, and that happens on every block. Folks will park in straddle two spots and then not park in their off-street parking.
Right.
And, and the effect ripples down to other people like yourselves that have no on-street parking, but that's nothing that we can.
Or people who come with six SUVs for one property.
The advent of the, of the short-term parking, I don't know, do you have any, would you, would you guess how many short-term parking units there are in Ventnor?
Short-term rentals.
Short-term rentals, how many do you think?
Short-term rental?
Like that Airbnb, how many do you think?
That's the generic term.
That's a generic term, how do you think?
I think there's a, a, close to a couple hundred maybe now?
That's right, there's two hundred and fifty.
Mm-hmm.
And they're clustered in, roughly, they're clustered mostly in Atlantic City side of the, the city, but they're all over, and that's something that the city never had before.
It's, and it's, and it's also, I mean, I've had to call about one of them behind me.
Right.
A couple of times.
Oh, no.
Um, just crazy late behavior out in the backyard, they're not allowed to smoke in the house, so they're out in the back of the house, cursing twelve, one o'clock at night, I mean, it's pretty crazy.
We've, we've had the discussions on, on the short-term rentals, we created an ordinance that requires them to get a mercantile license, 'cause they're essentially operating a, and the reason, you, you, you know, you nod your head, but.
Yeah.
We don't know who these people are, we don't know who's renting these houses out, so now we have a mechanism where we can go in and, and Mr. Agnesino can do an inspection, get an occupancy load.
Yeah, I told him about all the ones on my blog, just so he knew who they were.
So we have an occupancy load, we have an owner, that if there's an issue, we can, we can go, we can, you know, Chief Biaggi will write in a, a ticket, our code enforcement can write a ticket. So when we had these discussions, Chief Biaggi was like, we don't have a lot of complaints about Airbnbs.
We really don't.
We really don't.
If you do, you're welcome to call, and they actually prefer if you call, but most of the time, the complaints are people getting in and out of cars at evening hours, because they're here to enjoy themselves.
Early mornings.
Yeah.
Early mornings, however you wanna look at it, I guess.
Yeah, it's a party for them.
Yeah, it is, and that, and, and part of that is our, the nature of our town, right, we're on an island that's a resort community, it always has been.
It's changed a lot, though, it's changed a lot, I, I've seen a radical change since Sandy, in the density, in the craziness, in the partying and whatnot, um, yeah.
Yeah.
Alright, thanks.
If you have issues, please call the police department, they, they.
They really don't be afraid to call.
And what I have found is, if I contact, if I email, like, Vacation Rental by Owner or those places, sometimes they'll put them.
Yes.
They'll take them off for a couple weeks.
That's right.
Or whatever, so maybe.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Commissioner, also, if, um, you know, we've had people call, residents called to ask if a certain, um, home has registered as an Airbnb or a vacation rental by owner, and if they, you know, if we don't have anything, and the resident's calling and saying this is an Airbnb, then we know to reach out to them. So if you know of a home, you can always call the construction office and see if they, um, filed for a mercantile license, and if they haven't, then it's good for us to get that information from you, 'cause we'll make sure they have.
Thank you.
Hi, good evening, Matthew Bashi Katlebowski, five thousand Boardwalk, unit five oh nine, um, I've been a resident here for three years, and, um, my balcony actually looks onto an abandoned house that I'm assuming has been, uh, uh, left over from Hurricane Sandy on Austin. About two months ago, I think, um, it had, now has squatters in it, because the windows that have been barred, uh, boarded up and or sealed now are broken.
Do you know that address?
It's the third house from the beach, it's mauve, and it literally has, and my second part of the question was, how do I get somebody to look at it, and the second part of it.
Here's a couple things, just, just the first part of it, we have an, an app on your phone called See Click Fix.
Okay.
You download that app, take a picture of the property, it geolocates to that site.
Okay.
And it comes, it's a service through ACUA, the Utilities Authority, they will disseminate it, whether it's Public Works.
Okay.
If that's the case, it goes to Mr. Stinson, it also gets copied to the three of us, if it's code, it goes to Jimmy Agnesino's office.
Perfect.
And then that way, it's, it's, it's logged in, and then we can track it.
Perfect.
So if you see something like that, and this goes for anybody, you see an issue anywhere in the city, a pothole, a, a tree down, anything, take a picture of it and send it to See Click Fix, 'cause it, it works.
Okay, cool.
It gives us the ability to, to track it too, so.
And the.
Streetlights, if they're out.
Streetlights, yep.
And the second part of that question is just that it has debris on it that's been there for three years, there's mattresses, there's comforters, paint cans, beer bottles, the whole porch is, is loaded with trash, I almost got.
The photos will, the photos will tell the story and code enforcement will be there.
Awesome, I'll get them in tomorrow.
Tomorrow, you'll be there tomorrow.
See Click Fix, you can download it right now.
Awesome, thank you.
Go to the app store.
Miriam Holzman, five thousand, I'm Matt's neighbor, and I've seen many of the sober houses, the kids who go into those homes wander around the house that Matt is talking about.
Okay.
So we do see people going in and out at all different times of night, they don't even belong there.
Yeah, so good as time as any to update on, on the sober living, if you're following any of this in the paper, um, there was a bill proposed by one of our assemblymen to, in our opinion, make it easier for these sober living facilities to operate in communities. I had the chance to sit down with Assemblyman Mazzio last Friday and voice our concerns with that, um, Beth, Tim and I are certainly supportive of people getting better, um, and, and getting the help that they need. There needs to be some limitations on how many of these can be located in a community. Right now, Ventnor has twenty-three sober living facilities in it, that's way too many, they are congreg, they are concentrating and clustering, there's three on Austin Avenue, that's, that's unacceptable. So I, I met with the Assemblyman, asked him to reconsider some of the things in that bill, I also reached out to Senator Brown, he gave his full support, uh, with some of the changes that we are, we are gonna propose.
So the city of Ventnor is gonna propose to the bill?
Yes, um, we, we are, it's not essentially on hold, but it is, and, and they're gonna have a, what they call a planning committee meeting, and I will be at that meeting. So it's something that, you know, and, and, and again, I'll say this again, there are people that need this help, and, and, and it works, it can work for, for people that, that need that, that help. But it just, it can't ruin the rest of our communities, and that's what's real important, um, to us and to you, we've heard comments, we had a hearing, and I don't know if you heard this, we had a resident step up like I've never seen somebody step up, um, and I'm not gonna use his name, 'cause I don't wanna to put it out there. There was an application before our planning board for a, a rooming house, or not a rooming house, a sober living facility, which typically doesn't even have to come to the planning board, this one did, 'cause it needed some relief for something. This gentleman was in his neighborhood, he called the next day, reached out to the owners of the property that were selling it to the sober living facility, went down, met with them, paid twenty thousand dollars more than asking price to buy the property out from under the sober living group, and then had to pay a fourteen thousand dollar penalty to get out of the contract, just to save a, a property in his neighborhood. That, that's going well above and beyond, um, I, we applauded the gentleman at the planning board, um, the other night, Tim, you were there?
Yep.
And, you know, he did it because he didn't think it was appropriate for his street, and it's, and there was a couple of them on the street already, so that was part of the problem, so.
And back to legislation, the other side from a, from a public safety standpoint, there's a lot of missing pieces as far as whether these are just designated as something that needs to be inspected for life sa, for life safety. And they're not right now, so our department is also giving, we'll have some work for you to show them that, that, what they should have is a bare minimum, things like smoke detectors and, and, and the ability to inspect these homes, so that, so that they're not.
They're inspected and not by us, the DCA inspects them, and issues licenses, that's the problem.
Right.
So they're not local, and they don't see the issues we have, so enough on that, but thank you for coming out, thank you for raising the issue.
Uh, Richard Grober, twenty-six North Hillside again, uh, first of all, I appreciate the, uh, notion that people can call in, because the Airbnbs that I've noticed, it's always the one or two that are the bad ones. Many of them are very good, maintained and involved, and you get that one where the sixteen people pull up from New York, and they're there for the weekend, and the neighbors are, go through, at least if they can call in, because I've also been told of people that have Airbnbs that never registered them to the city, and I said, if you don't, you can get fined for that. It's a small fee, you know, you put it on the records where people can do that, so I think that's moving along. Uh, question about the dunes, uh, I've, I hope that we never see the day, and I know the dunes had a rule that you were not allowed to ever stop the tops from raising or going higher, and I hope that we don't see the day in Ventnor where you're gonna walk down the boardwalk and not be able to see the ocean, like it isn't Atlantic City.
Is that still set or? We are permitted to trim the grass, um, and actually, if, if you watched what they did the last time they came in, there were some dunes that were getting taller than the rest.
Right.
And they, they leveled them, right by the pier.
Okay.
They, they came in, they have a, a different model than they had when they first built the dunes, it's more of a, um, template, that is a longer template that goes out into the ocean more.
That's the answer, I mean, it never, the water never goes that high, you know what I mean, so.
It does, we're all in trouble.
Well, I understand, and I, uh, you know, I always remember the Benoit family that lived right behind the Wawa, you stand at the Wawa, look to the right, and that was our pet, they were, they were our poster children for the eminent domain battle, and their home, when it was built in the late eighteen hundreds, was oceanfront at the time.
Right.
Nothing else from there all the way to the ocean, the ocean wasn't there then, but it was still oceanfront, you know, so I'm glad to hear that, I mean, I have been tempted on a few occasions to go there late at night and rake some of the sand down, you know?
I wouldn't suggest you.
I wouldn't, yeah, I have a feeling, I have a feeling, but I, I thought about it, I had thought about it.
We have permission to do it from the DEP.
Alright, well, you know, just, it's a sin, I mean, I, you know, I'm.
We can't touch the sand, we can trim the grass.
Yes, okay, so I hope when they trim the grass, maybe they might be able to level it a little bit, and I would never want to succeed to go back to what Atlantic City is today, you cannot see the ocean from the board.
Those dunes were built that high.
Yeah, yeah, I understand, that was, and it, but they've grown with the sand, you know, so that's one thing, one thing, uh, knowing the foot traffic we're gonna have with the movie theater, uh, and I've spoken to Tim about it, and I've asked for this for probably the last eighteen or twenty years, why can't we have the crosswalks painted on Ventnor Avenue, all the crosswalks, to encourage people to walk through the crosswalks? They are on Atlantic Avenue, they are from here to Longport, but Ventnor Avenue, I was told three or four years ago, they were repaving, they were gonna do that, so right now, it's only at the red light corners, so if they, if the crosswalks were painted, at least it would be a motivation, because of that movie theater, there's gonna be people crossing the street all over, so a thought, any ideas?
Well, we applied for a grant to do that, we did not get it, uh, we applied again this year, we, we were hopeful, again, um, we don't wanna spend our money if we can spend free money.
Of course.
That's what we're working towards, um, from Dorset to Margate, and through Margate, the county is actually doing a, a intersection improvement program, and are they gonna do crosswalks with that?
Only at signalized.
Yeah, at the signalized intersections, the county will be redoing Atlantic Avenue, or, excuse me, Ventnor Avenue from Dorset to, uh, Margate, actually, they're gonna go through there, but, so at least we'll get some of those done at the county's expense, not ours.
Just out of curiosity, is that really a major expense to paint the crosswalks, the half, I mean, a third of them are painted now, maybe, maybe even a half, is that an expensive project for the city to do with the room in?
We don't do it ourselves, so we, what, what you do is you don't just paint them, 'cause it doesn't last long enough.
Yeah.
Use the thermoplast, which is what was used on Atlantic Avenue, and that's, that's what lasts longer, it's reflective, um, and that's, you, you do it right, you just don't do it.
Okay.
That's been a problem in the past, you just do it.
Right.
If you don't do it right, it's not done.
And it does add up, I remember the cost of just what person that, in the shape of a bicycle was like a thousand dollars.
Okay, uh, two last items real quick.
Um, Ed, Doug and I met when we did our end of season and getting prepared for the new season, and I think we identified it, maybe a couple areas, we can sprinkle them in there now, and then that end of town, we still have to go through and finish up.
Right.
So, stay tuned.
In order to try to save a life tonight, uh, Frankfurt Avenue, if you're driving from Ventnor Avenue towards the bay, which is probably gonna become one of the most busiest streets in the whole wide world, because people are gonna drive that way, that's the only way. because people are gonna drive that way, that's the only way they're gonna get to the parking lot of the movie theater. And there was a sto-, there was an accident there, uh, last year, where a lady lost control of her car, knocked over a stop sign on the right, as you're driving down on the right-hand side, there is a stop sign on the left-hand side. And if you're familiar, I'm sure you're familiar with it, but Winchester Avenue is over here, wraps around like this and wraps around Winchester. So there is no stop sign. I've spoken to the police department, Public Works, there's a missing stop sign there. And knowing the traffic that it's going to be, maybe you can refer that to somebody to put that stop sign back up, because it is probably the most abused. If you needed a new fundraiser for the city, I can watch 22 cars, 21 will not stop at that stop sign.
We can deputize you, Mr. Gober, in Frankfurt, is it Frankfurt and?
Frankfurt and Winchester.
And Winchester.
Yeah, right, it's right behind my home and I, it's, it gets in the driveway's way, but it'll save somebody's life, because kids come driving then down on this way on the bikes, on Ventnor Avenue, or on Winchester Avenue, coming back this direction. They're driving here and they just run that stop sign and they're around, so just a thought. One other last thing, uh, we're very proud of Stacy and myself, and Richard Conklin are the main committee people, and Miriam is one. I always love to give Miriam credit, because she came up with the name North Beach when we started that. I always love to compliment her for that. She's usually embarrassed by it, but in any event-
And here's the question, did you call Atlantic City and say, "Hey, what are you doing? We already got that name."
Well, you know what, we, we, we are very happy that we didn't know about that, okay?
I've said it.
Yeah, we, we're very happy, but Miriam said, and I always like to have a polite little fun with her accent, and she said, "Well, in Miami, there's South Beach. Why don't we have North Beach?"
I like it.
So that's how it happened, okay? And to tell you the truth, I saw that there was this rebirth in Atlantic City of North Beach. We've done a hu- heck of a job, uh, in North Beach. And for your own information, this will be our third year of giving a $2,000 scholarship by our residents to one person that lives in North Beach.
That's great.
To either, we first honored Stockton, because we were happy with what they were doing, and we opened it up, because believe it or not, this past year, there was not one student in North Beach going to Stockton. But I personally preferred Lanning County College, because they are the needy people. And it's $2,000, it's a thousand a year, and what we didn't wanna do is give that to somebody going to Harvard, okay? So we're very proud of it. Thank you very much for your time.
Thanks, Mr. Gober.
Anyone else? Gonna move on with the agenda? Or we're gonna actually need a motion to close the workshop portion?
Motion to close the workshop portion?
A second roll call, please.
Commissioner Kreebel?
Aye.
Commissioner Langram?
Aye. Okay. So we have no minute, we're gonna move right into our, our, where we actually adopt the stuff we just talked about for the last two hours. Um, approval of minutes, we have none. Ordinance introduction, need a motion to introduce Ordinance 2020 dash 001?
Motion to introduce Ordinance 2020 dash 01?
My second. Roll call, please.
Commissioner Kreebel?
Yes.
Commissioner Langram?
Yes. Okay, we have ordinance introduction of, uh, need a motion to introduce Ordinance 2020 dash 002?
Motion to introduce Ordinance 2020 dash 002?
My second. Roll call, please.
Commissioner Kreebel?
Yes.
Commissioner Langram?
Yes. Also introduction of Ordinance 2020 dash 003. Motion, please.
Motion to introduce Ordinance 2020 dash 003?
My second. Roll call, please.
Commissioner Kreebel?
Yes.
Commissioner Langram?
Yes. Ordinance introduction of Ordinance 2020 dash 004. Motion, please.
Motion to introduce Ordinance 2020 dash 004?
Second. Roll call.
Commissioner Kreebel?
Yes.
Commissioner Langram?
Yes. Uh, we have no public hearings on any ordinances. We have, uh, no ordinance adoptions. We have a public hearing on the street open, hardship street opening for 114 South Portland Avenue. So motion to open public portion on that, please.
Motion to open public portion as described.
Second. All in favor? Aye?
Aye.
Okay, anyone here to speak about 114 South Portland Avenue, the street opening? Sir, please come forward, state your name.
Hey, I'm Ted Leeds.
Mr. Leeds, can you raise your hand, please?
Yes, sir.
Swear to tell the truth, the whole truth and number of the true self you got?
Yes.
Go ahead.
I'm a resident of Ventnor, 1707 East Drive in Ventnor Heights, and I'm a builder, uh, Leeds builders, and we're constructing a new home at 114 South Portland Avenue. And we have a hardship with a street opening permit, similar to the one Mr. Bellenson was speaking about earlier. Um, in addition to determining whether or not the water and sewer lines need to be replaced, we are also looking to open the street up to bring in a two-inch water main for a, um, sprinkler system that we're installing in a new construction house. So it's, um, kind of something new we've been doing in, in, uh, many of the houses. It's a safety measure, which we feel is a very good one for, not just for the residents of the home, but also for the fire department fighting any fires in, in the house, so, um. But the water line that needs to come in for that, uh, residential sprinkler system is a two-inch water line off the main, which is almost always dry, and hopefully the only time it would go when, when it would call for with a fire, so.
Hopefully never, right?
Hopefully never, but, um, the water needs to, the pressure needs to be there to be able to, to do that. So, and just noted that, um, we would do everything in accordance with the engineer's requests, including that infrared refurbishment, which I don't know exactly what it is, but the guy that's gonna do it for-
Looks like a big toaster. It really looks like a big toaster that they put down on top of the asphalt and heats up the stuff around it.
Okay.
Blends in better with no scene.
Great.
Let, makes the road last longer.
So we'll obviously do everything that's required of the city to make sure it's put back together correctly.
All right. Appreciate that. Thank you. Anyone else have anything on this application for hardship? Seeing none, motion to close?
Motion to close.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
We'll have a resolution on the next meeting.
So your resolution will be on at our February 27th meeting?
Okay.
For, for adoption.
I wanted to make just one other comment, that, um, in going through this process, I had to first go into the, um, Water and Sewer Department and met with Ed Stinson and, and a couple other individuals, and then went through the city and met with Lisa and, um, this gentleman sitting next to Ed over here. And I just wanted to say that everyone in the city was very, very helpful, and very polite, and thoughtful, and we work in a lot of different municipalities, and, um, you guys are doing a fantastic job.
Great, thank you.
And just wanted to let everybody know that-
Al, I've asked you to stop giving these guys these, these lines to say.
No, honestly, they really did. It was unsolicited.
And we do appreciate that. We make, we make a joke of it, but, but that's something that we're very, we pride ourselves on.
Yeah.
Uh, we have people that work that, that make us look very good, that work here every day.
It's good, just to be greeted with a smiling face, and sometimes, you know, a lot of times you go into municipality, they see a builder come in, they're like, "Oh, this guy, you know, he's trying to..." But like, you know, we're all kind of in the same boat, trying to beautify the city and, uh, you know, everything. So we wanted to thank you all, all for that.
It's a beautiful project, by the way. Yeah.
Thank you.
Thanks, Ted. Thanks for coming out tonight. Um, so we have public comment on resolutions only. We kinda already did that.
Yeah, I think so.
Is there any further comment on the resolutions we're gonna adopt tonight? Make a motion to open it to, just to make sure.
Motion to open the pu-, public.
Second. Roll call. Aye?
Aye.
Okay, if anybody wants to comment on the resolutions, I think we kind of already, we gotta take that out, 'cause we don't need that.
I think you did. I think it was my mistake.
Okay, all right.
I'm gonna dismiss it, the sign.
Okay. Motion to close?
Motion to close.
All in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Okay, so resolutions, we're gonna do by consent, and that is gonna be resolutions 2020 dash 57 through 2020 093, correct?
Omitting 082.
Omitting 082.
082.
Okay, I have a motion to adopt resolutions by consent.
Motion to adopt resolutions as described.
Second. Roll call.
Commissioner Kreebel?
Yes.
Commissioner Langram?
Yes. Okay, that's two and a half pages of resolutions. All right, bills and payroll. Al, you wanna go through our-
Since our last meeting, we had three payroll ones. Uh, the first payroll was on 117, was $530,087. The next one on, on January 31st was $504,091,53. And the last payroll was just run for today, for tomorrow, was $495,113,33. And our bill list for today, uh, is $3,525,435.
Okay. Motion to approve bills and payroll?
Motion to approve bills and payroll.
My second. Roll call, please.
Commissioner Kreebel?
Yes.
Commissioner Langram?
Yes. Announcement, safety report, you have anything?
Read that into the-
Just read that.
And, no, no, just, uh, have it entered into the record. I don't, I don't, we don't need to read it.
January 2020 reports, uh, read into the record as if it was read. Commissioner comments? I don't really have anything at this point.
I, I said my piece.
Yeah, I wanted to update about the, the, uh, sober living, and I got a chance to do that, so. Um, I do encourage our residents to reach out to our, our legislators and voice your concerns. You know, they are elected county and, and district-wide, so I would encourage you to, to voice your concerns with that, whether they be positive or negative. They, they should know our feelings, so encourage you to do that. Open it up to the public on anything that, uh, you feel like talking about tonight. Motion, please?
Motion to open public comment?
Second. All in favor? Aye. Anyone? Think we're talked out?
I will repeat the program, if you like, after executive session.
Yeah. Motion to close?
Motion to clo-, motion to close.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Commissioner Langram and Kreebel, if you, uh, there's, there's more people here than we usually have.
Right.